It is four o'clock on April 14th, 2020, and I'd like to call this virtual Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone at this time, and we will have a roll call attendance. Myself, Nancy Roach, Kristen Morrissey.
Here.
Wes McCall.
Present.
Tom Cleveland.
I'm here.
Darla Light.
I'm here.
And Superintendent Jeff Bearden.
I'm here.
Now, would you please stand for the pledge? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have before you a recommended agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are no recommended changes, Nancy.
Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve is published?
So moved. This is Tom.
There's a motion by Tom and a second by Kristen. Is there anyone opposed to approval? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. First, under our presentation and discussion items, it is a construction update by Tom Winning.
Good afternoon. So we are pleased to report significant construction progress throughout the district during the past month on all of our projects. So taking you through those projects, really beginning with the high school, our first largest high school being East Forsyth High, I'll show you an aerial view of where we're currently at. We have just recently reached the milestone of a successful steel top out. What's interesting at this phase, when you have 430,000 square feet in the area that we just topped out in this area, currently we're putting in steel decking, roofing, but the area that we began in on the right-hand side, we currently are painting. So we really, at this stage, have all the trades onboard, running through all the various scopes. On the exterior and the portion that we began, we have cast stone currently proceeding, brick currently proceeding. And in the interiors, in the space between where you saw the steel top out and where we're painting, a lot of the interior walls of masonry are underway. And in addition, you know, over the 90 acres, we've got Sony Electric, Atlanta Gaslight working, the Jotum Down Road being relocated, paving underway, septic fields. And in addition, the sports fields, work is progressing on the athletic fields as well as all the athletic buildings. We're even installing the competition football field bleachers now. So that job is well underway. And before I really go to the next job of ACE and FOCAL, just want to share with you, you know, personally, how we are working through successfully, I might add, the new paradigm and some of the unprecedented challenges associated with COVID-19. So, you know, most importantly, sincere gratitude to the thousand, literally craftsmen and laborers, carpenters, electricians cumulatively working across all our projects through the governor's executive order. All those workforce is essential. Our projects are essential. So we are thrilled to share that that is really business as usual for us. But in addition, you know, to that executive order allowing that, I think we really owe gratitude as that workforce has just been so dedicated and loyal and diligent, working through the challenges of the past month with a real commitment to our students and faculty. Secondly, we are analyzing very proactively material and supply chain logistics, literally a thousand elements go into each of these buildings. So what we're watching for is any areas of risk, that being some international material, be it light fixtures from Mexico, tile from Italy, or circuit boards in China mechanically. But fortunately, across the board on all our projects, we've developed contingency plans for that material. And I'm pleased to say we're expediting the material in all cases such that the supply chain doesn't create a challenge for us later. Additionally, working with the chief building officials, both Fire Forsyth County Building, we have changed some of the procedures. As you may know, housing inspections, residential do not occur, but because of the significant nature of our projects, all of the inspectors are collaboratively working with us. Also, we owe thanks significantly to finance and accounting, our bookkeepers. Now that we've had some decent weather, we're back to processing promptly and accurately over $10 million worth of work each month. So some other institutions, whether it's public or private, haven't been able to do so, and that keeps it going. And then I'd say lastly, technology, that is certainly a game changer, be it Zoom meetings or this team meeting, allows the proper communication to happen. So I say that not only for how you see the results of what we're doing at East Forsyth High School, but across all the projects you're about to see. So moving to ACE and FOCAL for the next project screen, this photo was taken a couple of weeks ago. So you see site utilities now substantially complete. Much of the underground, under slab work is complete. You see the slab on grade for ACE, and you see the significant balcony support wall 60 feet high, supporting the structural steel that's about to arrive. So I say this photo was taken roughly 10 days ago, and if you flip to the next photo, you'll see structural steel well underway at the academy, and we are expecting steel tomorrow for the performing arts focal. So we're moving very fast now that we've finally come out of the ground with some decent weather. You'll see that project accelerated. Moving on, we've got a nice success story here. This is West Forsyth High School, and we're just thrilled to report we got the certificate of occupancy March 12. Since then, punch list has been completed, and we reached another milestone today of the FFNE and furniture currently being installed. So we're just thrilled to get that open for the students this coming August. Just a quick interior shot, as most of you know, you've seen the generic classrooms, but this is a little different. This is CTAE, the Family and Consumer Science Lab, a couple photos there. So we're thrilled that that's being occupied. The next page is just a narrative that I think we've really covered. All the projects now for the high schools are either complete or well underway and all on schedule, which brings us to the middle schools. This next shot is of Hendrix Middle School. Again, retaining walls now substantially complete, grading substantially complete, underground utilities. Always hard to see that progress. And then once we hit steel, the superstructure moves pretty fast. So having said that, this photo was, the prior photo was taken about a week ago, and just in a week's time, you see the significant amount of structural steel being erected. So we're happy to see Hendrix moving now as fast as it is. The next project, just a real accomplishment. We were able to, with Carol Daniel, our general contractor, extremely pleased to report that this is Poole's Mill Elementary School. We achieved the certificate of occupancy on March 23rd, really overcoming a lot of challenges during not only the winter weather, but what we've experienced the past month with the virus. But since then, punch list is currently in place, work in progress, and FFNE furniture is set to begin in early May. That takes you through a couple of the different exterior views. So the next shot is of the porticoche, just a great, again, symbolic ode to the Poole's Mill Bridge, great reference to the local district. As we move to the interior, the first you'll see is the enhanced security vestibule, not only here in the new construction of the elementary school, but really representative of all our elementary schools. This lobby is really nice and different. You know, you're not in any of the other 22 elementary schools with the grist mill. On the next photo, Mike, just a nice tribute to the area. Moving through some natural colors, you'll see the stone. This is the media center. Moving forward, we've got a couple shots. This is the cafeteria, looking towards the kitchen. The next shot is of the cafeteria looking to the stage, again, incorporating the stone natural to the area and just a nice feature touch. The next shot is of the central corridor. It gives you a feel for some of the colors of the school, supplemented with some of the natural stone. Gymnasium is the next photo. So we're really thrilled to get certificate of occupancy that early in the process and furniture moving in in just a couple of weeks. That then brings us to the balance of the narrative. So going through those projects, the safety and security vestibules for the middle schools are now underway. I'm pleased to report for a couple of the projects that you see, the middle schools, the initial intent was to bring that to the board in May. Tim Amerson's done a great job accelerating the design. We have a unique opportunity now to start those projects early so that we finish them earlier. You know, always being mindful and sensitive not to impact existing operations with our construction. So we will bring those projects, CTAE Technology Labs at several of the middle schools in Lakeside. We'll bring that board approval to you next week as we complete the procurement process this week. Additionally, then, that leaves Elementary School 23, which is currently under design. So we're really active on all of the projects throughout the BON program. So with that, are there any comments or questions on the program?
Are there any questions for Tom? I don't hear any at the moment.
Didn't miss a beat.
Okay, yeah, it's great, especially with the occupancy already with Poole's Mill. That's exciting. Well, there's no more questions. Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you. Stay safe.
You too. Next, we have a presentation about our homeless student population with Kim Puhar.
Hello, and thank you for your time to give this update today. I am going to be sharing my screen. Give me one moment. All right. So since our last time that we met in January, our homeless population is now at 634 with five families pending. 97 of those students are unaccompanied homeless youth. We have a 98th in the wings that we're trying to get ahold of in the midst of this. She called registration over spring break and only has an email. During the COVID school closure and online shift, we've had 63% of our students contact us about food. 31% of the unaccompanied youth need technology and food in addition to technology often, and 6% have contacted us about housing. Other updates since our last meeting and our last touch base is Orange Duffel Bag has launched. This year, we had a surprise. We typically are working hard to get our 20 to 25 seats filled. This year, we had 31 students show up on Saturday at Linear Tech, and it was a wonderful opportunity to problem solve through. Orange Duffel Bag is on pause right now, so we'll be shifting to a fall session and working with the students who are seniors to help them gain some of the skills they would have through Orange Duffel Bag as they exit their high school and move on to college and other career choices. We had an interview for the youth community liaison position at the place and have hired someone. Her name is Amber, and she's one of our interns who worked with our social work team, and she is absolutely amazing. She is working part-time, and right now, her main focus and scope is emergency response and food needs. The place has made an offer on a house for unaccompanied homeless youth, which was something that we didn't think would be happening yet, and we're very excited about that opportunity for the youth that are unaccompanied that do have housing needs. Right now, that house is on hold because the people who are occupying it don't have another place to go with the scope of what's going on with COVID right now, enclosures on homes. Also, we've added to the McKinney Vento Program and an EASIS estimate, the addition of homeless high school youth to address the specific needs of unaccompanied and those at risk of being unaccompanied in the future. In the midst of all this collaboration and this forward progress, with change comes opportunities for new growth. And we've looked at collaboration between the school system and the place to be able to track the data and measure the growth and look at our learner profile, but also the scope outside and inside the school system and that collaboration. In that process, we found Chapin Hall, which is some best practices and amazing studies, and they actually did work that really verified the direction that we're already headed, and it has research behind it at a national level and not just a local and state level with the research that we're doing. They found a core four, and those core four include social and emotional well-being. They talk a lot about those internal assets and resiliency. The second thing that they found are permanent connections. And the third thing was education or employment. I'd rather say education and employment because they're both key for this group of youth. And then safe and stable housing. As far as that social and emotional well-being piece goes, resiliency was found as the biggest piece. And a youth's resiliency is their power to meet life's challenges, giving them the ability to manage stress and function in daily lives. And that was the core finding in that whole piece, and it all had to do with the development of their internal assets and resiliency as a response to that. Permanent connections was the next piece, and that's really the scope of why we're looking at this partnership for this youth liaison position, why it's part-time funded already and why we're looking at making it full-time funded, because those permanent connections are keys. A lot of youth feel alone. They don't know trusted adults, and that's part of the ACE's work that's been done and the national studies. So that being said, those permanent connections are key to youth, and it helps them have a trusted network. The youth consult input that was done on the national study, the research showed that those permanent connections are better done in small groups versus an individualized person, which is why we're so excited that we're looking at internships and we're looking at mentorships, because they found that one person can't always be there. But if you have a small group and you know you're not alone going through something and you're in community, then you are forming a trust network and you're able to exit homeless cycles better and move on to well-being. Additionally, education and employment, a lot of youth, the study found, didn't have problems finding jobs. They had problems keeping jobs, which is why that specific scope of the internship to address the needs of the unaccompanied homeless youth and get them that mentorship piece embedded in the internship, that life coaching and those skills, and also working with Valerie and her team in CTAE to expand mentorships and internships on that level. And that's why I say it's education and employment and not just education or employment. But when students have those two prongs of education and employment, they're more likely to exit homelessness and to have better mental health overall. And then the last piece, although they didn't prioritize the four, they should, just said they were the core four, is that safe and stable housing. Like I said, so far, 6% of our unaccompanied homeless youth has contacted us for housing options. The fact that we do have a housing opportunity coming for them and for those youth that said, if there were something, I would be there in a heartbeat, is really exciting, and we're looking forward to seeing that partnership grow and expand out. Right now, I've provided you with a list of the current part-time positions for this youth community liaison, and I'm going to go ahead and give you a moment to read through it. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Kim, if you don't mind, just remind everybody where this funding came from.
Okay, sure. So this funding came from Brownsbridge in partnership with the school system. They had heard us address the needs of unaccompanied homeless youth, and they approached us and said, how can we support, what's the biggest need in, you know, among homeless students? And we talked about the need for the unaccompanied homeless youth, the 85% growth that we've had in the past five years, the causal roots of why they've grown. And so this position is coming in to develop individualized success plans for each student to help them have individualized needs, because just snowflake or fingerprint is the same. No youth that we work with has exactly the same needs in their social, emotional well-being and their need for permanent connection. And so we're going ahead and partnering with the place of Forsyth funded through Brownsbridge to offer this program. One of the things we also found is the practical need that youth have is to have an internship need. And so that internship needs provides them with stable housing. It pays a decent wage and a competitive wage for our youth to participate, and it also gives them the chance to have trusted adults in their lives and to form those connections, to have life coaching, and to have a network of support. It's been a highly successful model for the past three sessions that we've had, the summer internship, but there is a need to expand it out and to have somebody who can partner along with these youth to address their specific and individualized needs.
And just to remind the board members, you know, we talked about this at your retreat in January about the possibility of us funding the other half of this position to make it full-time. There certainly is a need there. Obviously, at this date, there's no way, you know, I can make such a recommendation to you because we have no idea what our revenue's going to look like for the next fiscal year. So we're just going to have to take a wait-and-see approach. There's no question the need is there. If we are unable to address that for the, this coming fiscal year, we certainly will put it on our priority list for the future because there's no question, as Kim said, with 634 homeless students in our district now, and that number grows at a rapid rate, and the other one, the 97 unaccompanied, is a very high number, too. There's a need for additional resources and support. If we can make that happen, I'd love to make it happen, but it may be something we have to just put on the back burner for another year until we have a better idea of what revenue looks like. But Kim is just doing heroic work, also with our partners at the place. You know, we're really doing our very best to meet the needs of these students, and I'm proud of the work we're doing.
I agree wholeheartedly. One of the amazing thing that's happened is Orange Duffel Bag. Not only did we have 31 seats, but the number one thing the youth have texted me about or contacted about are whether or not Orange Duffel Bag was going to continue this year. And we have had some great conversations, and that just shows the efficacy and the importance for this specific population of that small group, of that social, emotional wellness, of that permanent connections and of connecting. And so I probably thought that our funding may be limited for this year, but I did want to go ahead and show you what some of the full-time position additions might be. Obviously, it's an expansion of the current job responsibilities. It'll be coordinating and implementing fall programs to provide small group experiences that extend outside of Orange Duffel Bag, to develop that mentorship, partnering with other agencies and organizations in our community to develop mentorship and soft skills and expand the internship beyond. And instead of just being on a Saturday or just being over the breaks, like fall break or over the summer, it would expand out further and give the kids a true sense of that community and just a wraparound and those caring adults in their lives. The full-time position would also be developing a quarterly focus for the life coaching sessions in conjunction with the internship program. So part of the internship program was going to be a break and a power hour, for lack of a better word, where the students would receive thematic life coaching units and walk students through some of those things that would be unique to this population and unique to the needs of that cohort of students. This person would also be coordinating mentorship opportunities. That key word in that core four that just came out is resiliency, but also those trusted adults. And I know that's part of what we were looking at as we looked at building capacity in our school system as well. And then finally, this position will be working with Unaccompanied Homeless Youth House to refer students ages 18 to 20 and have that vetting process. Since it's not an actuality, but it's in the works, we don't have that full process vetted out or created yet, but it is something that's going to be a need in the future. But I wanted to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions about what's going on with the homeless education program or specifically with unaccompanied homeless youth, please feel free to ask.
I have a question.
Yes.
So is somebody in the part-time position now?
Yes, somebody is in the part-time position now. It was funded through Brownsbridge.
And that went through the place, or did Brownsbridge give the school the money?
So the funding right now went straight to the place because the place is able to wrap around where education ends. It's able to pick up on the needs of youth at a different level.
Okay, no, that's good. Is, the question, I guess, maybe for Dr. Bearden, that if you come to a point where you cannot recommend that this budget year, is there a way that we could work with the place to maybe do a fundraiser or a campaign to match Brownsbridge's contribution to make the full-time position?
That's a great question, Wes. You know, we haven't, we haven't talked about that yet, but certainly, you know, we would, we would consider that as an option. You know, we have a great relationship with, with the folks at the place right now, and, you know, I would say any of that would be an option worth considering because obviously, we have a very large need here in this community.
Well, if you need help with that, please, just let me or the board know. We can help with that if it comes to that.
Absolutely.
I have a question and comment.
Yes.
Obviously, thank Brownsbridge for their leadership and their community for the support from this position and working with the place. They're amazing. Also, for the, the house that the place is purchasing, how many students could that house?
I believe that it's going to house between eight and 12. I have not been able to walk it yet, but my understanding is it's currently used as a boarding house type model, and I believe that it could house up eight to 12. Obviously, it's going to depend on what happens with future references. I'm seeing things about students who are in colleges and what dorms are going to look like. Typically, you can put two students in one room, and so I think we're going to have to let, to see how things play out in the future, of what new standards become as far as space and how many people in a certain area. But I believe they were looking currently, you know, prior COVID, at eight to 12 people in the house, students in the house.
Right, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and your heart for this population, for all of our students. Thank you so much.
And we thank you, Kim. Any other questions? Okay, if not, our next presentation is from Kathy Carpenter, and she is going to present a revision to the policy JR on student records.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. We received a little bit more flexibility from US DOE at the beginning of the year to update who is considered to be a school official. So the first part of the policy that I'm asking to change is on the school official definition. And the basic pieces that we're going to add in relate to yearbook companies or yearbook vendors, picture companies, and graduation companies, as well as online curriculum providers. Recently, the US DOE said we can add those into our school official exception, and that just gives us a little bit more flexibility with how we can share student information with them and make sure that that, that information flow is fluid to them. So Mike, if you'll scroll down a little bit to the bottom of that page, we are also going to add a few things onto directory information. Item C is student phone number, and item D is student sex and student homeroom teacher. We also added parent guardian email to include the Forsyth County Public Library as well. As you know, we have made a partnership with the public library to provide students resources, but in order to provide the public library with some of the information they need, they were asking that we would add on student phone number, student sex. student sex, homeroom teacher, and that we would also ask parent email information be included in the data that we share with the public library. Because the parent email is kind of essential because that's how parents set up the account. The public library emails the parent email and says, hey, will you accept this account? And then the parent can proceed with the next steps in approving the account on their side. So their database includes some of those items and were needed in our directory information. Then at the bottom, item O, local student identification number is being taken off because we only needed that on there to support yearbook companies and picture companies with, you know, making sure that we had the right John Smith. And because you have like two kids with the same name. So your student identifier number is actually something that would help you separate the student pictures correctly. But now that we've moved picture companies and yearbook companies to school official, then we don't need the local student identification number inside directory information. So those are all the changes to the policy. I know one thing that was important last time we met. Was it that we can continue to ask parent permission of the county public library information share as well? So do you have any questions about that?
Hey Kathy, you're going to need to repeat those last couple sentences. Your microphone was breaking up, please.
Okay, okay, in the directory information, we took off the local student identification number because we were able to define yearbook companies and picture companies as a school official. So we no longer need that in our directory information. And we will continue to ask parents for permission specific to their email addresses, as well as their inclusion of having their student get a virtual library card from Forsyth County Public Library.
Are there any other questions for Kathy?
Kathy, I have one question.
Okay.
On the student phone number, and I should have thought of this before, is that really the phone number on record in the system? Meaning it's generally really the house phone number or the parent phone number as opposed to, say, my child's cellphone number?
Correct. That is the student phone or the parent's household phone number.
Whether it's the parent's cell or their home phone. So it's the parental number, probably.
Yes, that's the number that we're asking for.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kathy? If not, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Next is Fonda Harrison, and she's going to give us a presentation on the grading updates.
Good afternoon. Just, Mike, do you have mine ready to share? Or did you want me to do it?
Fonda, if you wouldn't mind sharing, I'm having an issue with something getting displayed publicly. So I want to make sure that this is visible to the public.
All right, so let me get it pulled up here.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you all see this on your screens, okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me get it back to the beginning. Okay. All right, so before we get started and I actually share information for our grading guidelines for this last quarter of online learning and Forsyth County schools, I wanted to let you know that there was a lot of conversation and discussion, not only within Forsyth County about what our plans would be, but also across metro districts and really considering what they were doing because it's important for us to have very similar plans for what these grades would be as our neighboring communities. So I think that you'll see with these grading guidelines and also some changes that we made with our instructional time guidance that we really are in line with our neighbors around the metro area. First of all, just the updated instructional recommendation. These are actually the timeframes that the students are actually working on their assignments, not necessarily for the teachers. Teachers will obviously spend more, the K-2 teachers would spend more than 90 minutes a day in their work. But the students' time with instruction would be those 90 minutes. So that's just an overall picture of what our change in time recommendations are. Again, this is something that is very similar across, not just the metro region, but also other neighboring districts that are not included in the metro area. For elementary, it basically ranges from 90 minutes to 120 minutes a day. Middle school has the choice of whether to do block days or seven-period days. And the same thing for high school. With none of those middle school or high school exceeding 210 minutes a day of student instructional expectation. And then also the change on Friday to no new assignments, and it really being a catch-up day for the students and also for the teachers to be able to plan. We also offer Friday forums for teachers for professional learning and giving them other tips and support to help them better instruct in an online platform. So Fridays are not for student new assignments. It's really a catch-up day for students and teachers. So here's just some general information about K-12. First of all, the most important one as far as posting of grades is the hold harmless provision. And basically, that is saying that any of the grades that are taken during this timeframe of March 16th to May 22nd, which is actually the entire fourth quarter for us in Forsyth County schools, these grades will only have a positive impact on the overall semester average for students. This is really because we have no control over the experience at home. This online platform may not be the best platform for some students. We don't know what the home environments are like. And we really, our teachers are doing a tremendous job in working to provide instruction for our students. We could not hold them responsible for their grades in a negative way. They can certainly improve their grades based on the scores that they may receive over this fourth quarter. As far as assignment completion also, we have encouraged our teachers to be very flexible in their deadlines of assignments from students. Again, just because of the circumstances at home. And this also includes any assignments that may have been given prior to March 12th. Students maybe have been absent prior to March 12th and didn't have a time to complete that makeup work. And we need to give them an opportunity to do that. So that assignment completion also includes those assignments. Promotion and retention based on guidance from the State Department and also the superintendent. Unless very unique circumstances arise, students will be promoted to the next grade level. We do have that unique circumstances. It may be that students have already, their parents and teachers were already in conversation about the possibility of retention. Our current promotion and retention guidelines require that teachers have those conversations by January. So those conversations may have already occurred. And there may be a situation like that, that students may be retained. But there will be no retentions of our students as a result of our online learning experience since March. Also, I'm sure you all are well aware of state testing and all state testing of the end of grade and end of course, the Georgia alternate assessment for our special education students and the G-Kids for our kindergarten students. All of those requirements and assessments have been waived for this school year. And then also for our special education and ESOL students, those are some of our most at-risk students with. And we have worked to support those teachers and encouraging them to collaborate with the general education teachers in supporting those students in the virtual environment. Also, Sarah Taylor has done an excellent job of providing any type of manipulatives or electronic devices that those special education students might need. In the event that it's necessary or required by students, there may be some cases where those special education teachers or ESOL teachers work directly with students outside of what the general education teachers are doing. Specifically for each level now, as far as elementary, we talked before about the guidelines for minutes. Here you can kind of see an example of what that might look like for K-2 and then also 3-5. These timeframes do not include the 30 minutes of independent reading a day. So for K-2, it's 90 minutes of instruction or completing assignments, and then an additional 30 minutes of independent reading. And then the same for 3-5, but it's 120 minutes, and then the 30 minutes of independent reading. And then as far as grading, this is a big change for us at the elementary level. As you all know, for the most part, we do standards-based grading in our elementaries. And this, following the guidelines and what's being consistently done across the metro area, we're going to a pass fail for our students. So that's going to require some support of our teachers and talking with them about specifically what that's going to look like. For middle school, again, it's school choice as whether they choose to go with block days of three or four periods or the seven-period days, and how those minutes vary there by subject per those days. As far as their grading, for middle school courses, which is all of sixth grade, all of seventh grade, and some of eighth grade, they will get a pass fail for their courses. For those students that are taking high school courses in the middle school, they will get numeric grades, which are what's required on a high school transcript. So they are still obviously taking their grades and will get averages for their grades. Again, with the hold harmless provision in place that any of the grades that they receive during this nine-week period would not cause their grade to go down from what it was at the end of the third quarter. And then also for final exams, following the Georgia Department of Education and also Superintendent Woods' recommendation, we will not be taking final exams in our courses in middle school. And now for high school, very similar as far as their blocks. That varies by school. It's up to the school to determine what that will be. The minutes per day are a little bit longer. As far as grading, very similar to what I just said as far as numeric grades, obviously for all the high school courses. Final exams, exactly what I had said, except for our driver's education classes. That is a requirement of the DDS, that students have a final exam cumulative assessment at the end of that program. So there will be the exception for those DDS classes. Also, obviously, with our students that are participating in dual enrollment, they will, that's up to the colleges and universities that they're taking those dual enrollment courses for. So we have no control over their final exams and their grading procedures. Just as a note, the International Baccalaureate, which is offered at South Forsyth High School, their assessments have been suspended for this school year. There have been some questions by those students and parents of the possibility of taking the AP exam for those courses. And that is not allowed. That is not something that IB will approve. So those students will not have an IB test and cannot take the advanced placement. And obviously, I'm sure you're all aware of advanced placement. Those exams are going to continue. They will continue in the home. The tests have been modified. You know, the interesting thing about advanced place that those specific tests have to be taken at the same time across the entire country. So if our AP economics students are taking our test at 8:30, well, in another time zone, it may be 7:30, the next time zone, 6:30. So everybody across the country has to take those tests at the same time, even in their homes. So that's, they're continuing their very stringent requirements as far as that. Next steps for us, obviously, we've sent information to Jennifer to develop and release a public document so that our community and parents will know what our general guidelines are for grading during this quarter. Also, as I mentioned, providing additional supports for teachers, very specific grading guidelines, how-to documents and videos for how they enter grades into Infinite Campus because there may be some things that are a little bit different in this situation. And then virtual meetings by grade and content to support instructional and grading decisions. Those are part of the Friday forums that I mentioned earlier that our content specialists here in teaching and learning are providing to our teachers to help them through how the grading and supporting the teachers in these next steps. I'm sure all of you know that once this started, Dr. Bearden instituted regular virtual meetings every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And so at each of those meetings, we've shared different quotes, different inspirational things. And this particular quote was one that we shared just before spring break. And we really felt like that it encompassed the situation that we're in and what we're asking of our teachers and our community for relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. This really is something all of us have to really and truly embrace in these unprecedented times that we have. And as we consider this, and we've gotten to the point that we've developed our plan for grading and what that's going to look like, we're already in the process of considering what next year's going to look like. We know that we're going to have students entering our buildings that have had instruction from a platform that maybe is not the best setting for them. We're going to have students, you know, that have been in very difficult home situations. We're going to have teachers that are struggling with the fact that they didn't have the regular end-to-a-school year that they've had in the past. So we're having conversations within our department about what are those priority standards and skills that need to be in place before those students can move on and be successful? How can we support them socially and emotionally to make sure that they're prepared and ready in those ways? And so we're planning for that as well because we know the beginning of next year is going to look very different than what we've ever experienced before. And I'm aware to any questions.
I'm sorry, Fonda, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, before we turn it over to the board to ask any questions or comments, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, Fonda has done a masterful job facilitating this for our district. We've received lots of input from our professionals throughout the district. As she stated in her comments, lots of meetings with Metro Atlanta professionals determining what may be best for students throughout our region. Really, we had two goals coming into this. One is, we wanted to make sure we give our students an opportunity to continue learning for the balance of the entire school year. I do know there are some districts that have considered, they are considering ending their school year early. We do not want to do that. We feel strongly that our children deserve the opportunity to have an entire school year. So that was one goal, make sure we continue learning. But the second goal, which was equally important, is we wanted to alleviate some angst, some stress for our students, for our staff, and for our parents. And I think what Fonda has presented to you today helps to do that. We know in a school system of our size, we're serving 51,000 kids, we will probably have some students and some families, once this has been announced, that may decide they're going to back off and they're not going to continue and stay as vested as they have been just because of the stress it creates on their home life. And I think we all need to be respectful of that. Of course, you know, we're going to encourage. We want our students to stay involved and stay engaged and stay vested because we think it's the right thing for them to do. But I think we have to leave that choice up to our individual families because we don't know what. because we don't know what people are dealing with. We know people have lost jobs. We know there is, you know, a lot of issues in homes. Maybe there's only one computer that they're sharing amongst two or three or four children. Whatever the case may be, we've obviously have sent home lots of Chromebooks and lots of KJTs to make sure there's connectivity. But I think this plan is respectful to all. And again, our goal is, we want to make sure we continue learning, but we also want to alleviate some stress. And I think this plan does exactly that. So with that, any questions or comments from board members? We'd be glad to take those.
I have a thought. I just wanted to throw out there. First, I do want to echo Dr. Bearden's comments. So this is a well-thought-out plan and I appreciate, Fonda, that you took the little extra time. I know some systems came out, you know, with their plan a little bit earlier, but I think you took the time to really think this through and reach out to teachers and get their input as well. So I applaud that. And I like that you're already looking ahead to next year to see how this is going to impact the start of instruction when school starts next year. But we often think about summer slide in a normal school year. So as much as teachers and students are going to be looking forward to our summer break this year, how will this impact our summer slide? And is there going to be any suggestions looking forward to how we start next year? How will we look at giving any thought or suggestion to our parents and students about what they may or may not want to do over the summer, given how our school year has ended and how we'll start up next year?
We have talked about that, Kristin. It's a great question, great comment. And really, as we always do at the end of the school year, we, you know, send home ideas for your summer work. And again, that will be very similar. You know, I talked to some people on the phone today and I said, for our students, really, as long as we keep them reading over the summer and, you know, for our young ones in particular, keep them working on those math skills of counting and time and cooking and doing measurement and those kinds of things, we're going to be okay next year. But so we'll still, like we have in the past, come up with summer plans to send home with our students. But also in planning for next year, have some ways to measure where these students are coming in, what that loss has actually been. There have been some of the national organizations that have already put out some research saying for some of our young students in math, they may experience- really concerning to us. So important that we do consider encouraging our students to continue to work over the summer, but also incumbent on us to be prepared when school starts to help determine where those students are and be prepared to spend the time to get those foundational skills in place before we jump into the next grade levels work or the next standards for the different courses in high schools. We really have to make sure that we shore those up and those are the plans that we're currently making. And then also the social and emotional part of it. You know, our children are basically, for the most part, social animals. And they're struggling, I think, with not seeing their friends on a daily basis. And so taking all of that into consideration when we come back to giving them an opportunity to get time to socialize and those kinds of things is important as well.
That's a good point. Thank you very much.
I just want to echo also, you know, Dr. Bearden and Ms. Harrison, you've done a fabulous job and you've really taken a lot of input from not only the staff, but some members of the community. And I think this is a good situation, just talking to people in the community. Everybody has a different situation going on and there's no way that we could come up with some kind of plan that's going to address everybody's situation. And so you gave them options and I think these are good options for parents. I do have one question with the, if there is a situation where a parent or a student just stops doing the work for whatever reason, I guess they'll just show zeros for that quarter, but it won't impact the final grade at the end? Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. They will, their average will go back to the second, third quarter average and that would be their combined with the first semester to get their year-end average for full-year courses. Obviously, if it's only a semester course, then it would go back to what their first-quarter score was.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the other thing is, and I don't know, I know that you guys have put a lot of work in supporting the teachers and supporting students. Is there something we can do over the next week or two that we could maybe support the parents on how to homeschool or how to help teach their kids at home? You know, conversations I've been having with people is that for us, what works for us is to still have a structure and still have the ability to, you know, set expectations. But when we come to the resources of how to help our son with some subjects that we might not know, where can we find those resources at? Maybe something we can put out to help them. And then, do you guys know when Jennifer's going to release it so that we can also share it?
I've sent it to her and I know she's been working on it. Dr. Bearden, I believe she's going to release it today?
I think that's the plan, that it's going to be released tonight, Wes. And if you do look at our website where we've had all this information around what's going on as we've been out virtually, we've put a lot of stuff out there coming from Debbie Smith's office about how important it is, and you mentioned this in your own household, importance for kids to have a structure, to know that, okay, I'm going to get up at a certain time, school is going to start at a certain time. And to have those very consistent structures in place is very, very important. But we also realize, you know, that, again, if you're in a household with one computer and mom or dad are both trying to work too, you know, you just have to come up with your own structure that works best for your family. But we certainly have tried to put some things out there, some helpful tips for our parents, and we'll continue to do that. There's a plethora of resources available on Forsyth County Schools' website. There's a lot of stuff out there that, you know, Khan Academy comes to mind immediately in the area of mathematics. There's a lot of resources out there for parents and students and we'll work to make sure we put that, those information on our website as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for all the hard work that you've done. My goodness, it's just been tremendous. I do have a question about policies. Are there any policy changes that you see the board needing to make? Or is everything that we might have needed to be changed been waived by the state? So we don't have to go there?
Everything that, as far as grading and reporting, all of those waivers that we've needed have taken place by the state. So there's nothing county-specific that we need to make as far as policies for any of the changes that we've made.
Okay, great.
Great question.
I also worry about the AP testing. You're saying it all has to be done at the same time. Are we going to have additional resources possibly for some of those students? Say, like you say, I mean, Dr. Bearden just mentioned maybe one computer in the house. What if you have twins and they need, both need to take the same test at the same time and don't have any, don't have the resources to do that? Are we going to be reaching out to those AP students at all or don't we know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I would say, make sure we all share, and share with your constituents, if students still need devices or connectivity, to email their building-level administrator and we will work to make sure that they get what they need.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And one of the things with these AP tests, you can actually take these exams on your mobile phones. I myself couldn't do that, but just because I'm not that much of a digital native, but obviously our students are. But yes, with these AP exams, there is an option that they can be taken on your mobile phone.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Fonda? Hearing none. Thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fonda.
Next on our agenda are, is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
Nope.
I'm sure we've learned a lot during this time, Nancy, and I expect we'll have to really think about all that we've learned during this time and bring that back during our work sessions in the future so we can talk it over and prepare for this type of situation possibly happening again in the future and what that looks like.
You know, Tom, that's a really interesting comment because some of the feedback we're getting from teachers is that, you know, of course, nobody wanted to work virtually for the last quarter. But some of the comments we're getting from teachers is, they feel like they're a better teacher now than they were before, that they have more tools in their toolbox, that it's forced them out of their comfort zone into to learn some things that they would have never learned before because they would not have been motivated to do so. And it's really inspiring to me, every Friday, the number of teachers that we have that are collaboratively planning and sharing what has worked well for them. And so as a school system, although this has been incredibly challenging, I wouldn't tell you anything but that. We've learned a lot from this experience. And our teachers, when it's all said and done, overall, we're going to be better.
That's good. Are there any other questions? Or Dr. Bearden, do you have any further comments that you'd like to?
No, just one final shout-out, if I may, to our entire staff. I mean, Forsyth County has pulled together. I think we've weathered this storm about as well as it can be weathered. Our teachers are working incredibly hard. They're probably working more hours now than they ever have before because it's such a different environment for them to work. And they're really, they're really trying to meet the needs of their kids. I will tell you, over the last three weeks, I get a fair amount of communication from parents. Over the past three or four weeks, I have received more positive feedback from parents than at any other time in the six years I've been here. Just really impressed and appreciative of all the hard work that our teachers and administrators and support staff are putting in to make sure we're taking care of their children. So I'm just really proud of our staff.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
Just one little quick one. I think we always have Teacher Appreciation Week and we have Bus Driver Appreciation Week. We might have to add Parent Appreciation Week this year because they kind of had to step up and do a lot more. And I think our parents have done a really great job.
They really have, Kristin. Thank you for saying that. It is amazing. You know what? It's interesting and some of the comments I'm getting from parents is, they have a new appreciation for teachers. They realize, you know, how challenging this profession is and it's forced them to learn some things about, you know, how school operates today. And so there has been some positives. There's no doubt about that.
Okay, at this time, do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel for our affidavit?
So, move, per Tom.
Second, from Kristin.
From Tom and a second from Kristin. Is there anyone opposed to the approval? Hearing no opposition, motion passes.